And we're going to open the meeting, the Selectments Meeting of December 27th, December 17th. Wish it was all over.
[laughing]
Sorry. We have one appointment at 7:30. So we'll move on to the agenda. We have no minutes, correct? We have Police Chief Recommendations.
I got a whole stack of stuff for you, right?
Yeah.
So which ones first? What do you got?
We were doing the recommendations first, the letters.
Yeah, so we had, the first one was for Officer Dave Santino. Officer Santino was a longtime, part-time officer here and for some family reasons had to resign. It's kind of a tough loss for us. Dave's kind of that one that everyone can go to, everyone can talk to. So in doing some brainstorming and talking with people, we decided to offer him another position to come back as a, like a special officer, but actually be our Department Chaplain. He's a deacon in his church. We'll send him some additional training, but it just seems like the perfect fit. It's a position we don't have filled, we don't have anyone in that capacity. And I think this week actually highlights the need for it. One of our part-time officers is also a full-time firefighter in Worcester and was at the fire where the firefighter was killed. He was in today and to see him and he, you know, it's like people need someone to talk to and to know someone they can trust and talk to. So that's why I'm recommending David for this position.
Okay.
So there's no one in place now?
There's no one in place now.
And how many hours are you thinking?
It's not a, it's like a special position, yeah, just, and not even, 99.9% of it's unpaid. We would just cover the training. Kind of like our special officers now, they work details, it's only John and Buster. And every once in a while they'll cover town meeting or the elections if we're struggling to get a body. So not a, not a paid position.
Okay.
So more of a ceremonial appointment.
Is that a second?
Yeah, that's a second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Second was Pam Agnew as a matron. So over the years, we had a lot of female dispatchers and they always acted as in the capacities of matron as well, you know, to be able to help out in the time of an arrest of a female prisoner. With the transition of regional dispatch, we lost several people. Sharon McGowan, our admin assistant, handles some of those duties as well as Chantel Smith as a part-time officer. It was very convenient for a long time as Chantel lived on South Street. So we had two people close by and in town. Chantel's moved away, so we have some difficulty at times. Oftentimes it's Sharon all the time that gets called upon to come in and it's difficult in the middle of the night. So Pam is someone that we know is, was a friend of Sharon's, actually was introduced to me. She was a substance abuse counselor, has a criminal justice degree and really was a good fit. So we actually sponsored her for a training class for this where she paid for herself to go. But now is in the position where she could assist us. It's a per diem position. We pay the same hourly rate that we pay part-time police officers and it's something that it could, at the most, be, you know, five hours a month if that. It really doesn't come up all the time, but when it comes up, it's when we really need somebody, so.
Okay, questions? Do I hear a second? You can second it and then ask questions.
I second. Yeah, so how often were Sharon and Officer Smith not available to help?
It's hard to give some exact numbers. It's ish, you know, maybe once a month with one, one arrest. You know, often if it's during the day, it's very easy, Sharon's here. A lot of times it comes into those middle of the night. Because one thing that's difficult is there's no minimum payments. If you come in and we use you for an hour, we pay you for an hour. So it's not, it's not often, but it's enough where we don't want to miss something.
And it's mandated that you have someone?
We don't, we don't have to have a woman.
Makes it more comfortable.
It's a best practice. You know, if there's a situation where we don't have a woman, a male officer can search a woman. It's just something if we can avoid, for obvious reasons, it's something we want to avoid.
And no capability to share resources with Dr. Jones?
We do, if there's female officers on duty. Unfortunately, in the surrounding communities, there's not a lot of female police officers.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the last would be a replacement vehicle or trade. So the Selectman accepted a gift in the past, a vehicle that we use for undercover operations and things like that, things that we can't use a typical police vehicle for. We got, you know, a, we got a vehicle. Wasn't much to it, but it's come beyond its useful life. The same people, Ricky's towing, Ricky has offered again to take the old vehicle back and replace it with another one. Oftentimes they have vehicles that are left on site that are never picked up, that they've towed, that they go through the process to get titled and in their name, that then don't have a lot of value, but they're willing to donate for us for use. So it would just be a replacement, a swap one for one.
So what's the expected life of the swapped car?
Ish. I would hope three or four years.
Last one lasted?
Last one about two and a half or so, but that had some gremlins when we first got it. This one seems to be in better shape, even though it's of about the same age.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. As long as...
Should I stay?
Yeah, as long as that's okay with Paul. We were gonna, can we finish up? Are you waking now?
Yeah, classic case of not paying attention.
He's having it anyways, so present, you know.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have disturbed you. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so I have a few budgets. Let's see, I've got a stack in front of me. So why don't we start with IT, data systems?
Okay. Do you have the handouts for us or?
I don't have copies of all the budgets.
Oh, they're all in here, okay. I thought this was Paul's.
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's too small.
All right, so we're starting with?
Start with our data systems.
Okay.
So when we look at data systems, wages, it was just the COLA increase that attached to that. And then a few changes in expenses that amounted to just over $3,000. Basically what we did is we've transitioned to, or in the process of transitioning, finishing the build out of new websites, so there's the support that goes along with that. With that, there's some money that was in your budget that now comes off, all the money that Gar spent as a webmaster disappears. There's no need to spend any of that anymore. The other thing I included this year, one thing we have not had and have been looking for a way to do is how we replace hardware. In the past, it was kind of done, whenever it was needed, there was a large capital purchase. It's difficult to budget things that way and really plan and have some consistency. You know, really in a modern office system, we should have some ways that we kind of just transition equipment. So what I've looked at and actually I found from Bolton is they use Dell and they use the lease program. So for a few hundred dollars a month, we can replace, between, between what we do with models, but between 10 and 12 computers per year, or this year, and then there'd be an additional $200 a month next year if we didn't want to do more. Right now, we're supporting over 50 machines. Not all necessarily need to be brand-new computers, obviously. You know, I function with one that my CD drive doesn't close anymore and things like that, but it does what I need it to do. So, and we get, we have five computers that are in police cars and that are in fire trucks that we've got supplied from the regional dispatch district that we would never need to replace. It just looks like a better way and a better system for us to make sure that we have the best operating hardware for the people in the offices.
And so that's what's?
That's in, yep, it's in the expense budget for data systems. So that's what leads to about a 30...
So is that really driving it?
Thirty, that was a $2,500 increase this year out of a total increase of $3,300. It was $1,600 under the, the website. And then what I was also doing is, it was a $750 supply budget. Any supplies that I need that I'm using, I use for police, I use for, it doesn't need to come out of all the budgets. So that was eliminated.
And the way the lease works, if something breaks, they'll just replace it?
They replace it, yeah.
So that's the contracted services?
That's the, that was an increase on contracted services, yeah.
And what, the other services, there's?
It's everything else we do during the year, unforeseen things, from broken and replacing printers to, hopefully, there's been a few that we've been having some problems with lately, that we may need to purchase new, but that's just there for what we don't know is going to happen on any given day.
Okay.
Unfortunately, computer equipment's not cheap.
I'm glad I went through the questions.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, how about communications? So communications with, there's a relative significant increase in wages. What I put in the budget right now does not match the recommendation from Personnel. I'm actually going to be at Personnel on Wednesday to discuss it more with them. They did propose a two-step increase. I had asked for a reclassification on the position. One of the things that I did get back from them was they didn't have any comparables. So I was able to provide them with some comparisons on the positions and the positions in this area. And I'm going to discuss that further with them on Wednesday. My hope is they're going to see it the way I have and the way I'm going to explain it to them. Basically, when you look at public safety administrative assistance in our area, the average starting pay is just over $20 an hour. So Sharon, this current year, is at 17 and change. The increase proposed by Personnel was a two-step jump, which would have put it at 18 and change. What I recommend was a one-step and a move up one classification level, which moves it to about $20.53 an hour, which is right around the starting average for our area. So again, that's something that may change depending on what Personnel's feedback is.
Right.
So, but I wanted to budget for what I thought, you know, would be the highest possibility.
And what are these contracted services?
So contracted services, we pay telephone, reverse 911, and regional dispatch. So, and Chris can kind of back me up on this, it's just a placeholder on regional dispatch right now.
We don't have an exact number for the budget?
We don't have an exact number. There's a meeting Wednesday, I don't know, I didn't see the budget on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting.
I did not either.
So again, it's kind of a placeholder right now. I think last year, as we went through, I came in initially a little bit high, we dropped it, actually with FinCom later on, once we actually had the actual budget. But I wanted to give you some numbers to look at.
Maybe we're counting on the Finance Committee to give us some numbers?
Well, it falls back on operations and they didn't properly post the meeting, so we're not meeting tomorrow. So, yeah. But so that's still, that's probably something that we'll have to come back and talk about again at a later time.
I was going to say, we need to delay this one.
Yeah.
Do you want us to delay approval of this?
I think that's probably the best thing. I just, I wanted to bring it forward and discuss it with you. I don't think we can really approve it now because we don't have a firm number.
Okay, well, Wednesday, perhaps I'll find something else out.
Yeah, and I plan on hopefully getting out of negotiations and then heading up there. So it's Lancaster, right?
Yes.
All right, why don't we go to police next? This is the biggest one, but probably the least, one with the least changes. So for police this year, what you see for wages and salary and increases, the union stuff is based on a, what we think the agreement is going to be. We actually thought we had an agreement in principle with the union and negotiations, but we haven't met since July.
You know, what's the deal?
We're gonna...
Can you say?
Very little communication, very little communication from the union.
We have made ourselves available.
We've made ourselves available. There was initially, people were away, it was wait until after...
Summer.
The summer, even though we already had what was an agreement in principle. Then after the summer, there was a death in one of the E-Board members' family and things that put us out a little bit farther. But hopefully we'll have some definitive numbers again on, on Wednesday that we can come back to you.
So that's the 37 and change you're talking about?
That's the 37 and change, yep. And the 30, the 37 and 37. So, and then the salary is my contract. On expenses for police, actually, what I requested in FY '19 is almost what I'm requesting this year. So the request for FY '19 was actually reduced by the Finance Committee. So if you, there's a breakdown that I included with that, because when they decided to reduce it, I don't know what they actually were considering reducing. So as we, as you move from 18, or 19 to 20, the only place we're really going to see any increases, I've eliminated some things, but is in our vehicles, on fuel, just on fuel costs. We were a little bit low in our estimate of price of fuel last year, the current fiscal year we're in. And actually, having just run the numbers this afternoon, for the last 12 months, I could actually budget for 8,500 gallons of fuel. For the last 12 months, we're actually just over 9,000 gallons. I see that number continuing to come down. The one nice thing about now driving the Volt, I went from about 50 gallons a month down to eight.
Nice.
So, so that number should go down, we should get into that 85 range. One thing I didn't account for last year in the budget was having a couple of younger officers that tend to like to drive around a little bit more, so we burn a little bit more fuel. And then the other increases are that, where we see significant increases in the uniforms, it goes up a couple of thousand dollars in the uniform allowance. It's just what we've been discussing and what, again, what I had planned and what we thought we had an agreement upon in principle in the union contract. So that puts us at the 105.6. And last year, when I actually came before the Board, what we voted on was 105.1. So it's really getting us back to where we were last year after the FinCom had made some changes.
So the bulletproof vests, those are brand-new?
Those are new, so we were, yeah, there's always a few that have to be replaced, yeah. So we, we are at the end of a cycle on a federal grant where we do get some reimbursement. So next year we'll be reapplying for that grant, I think $400 we might have left in that current grant.
And the training?
Training, so we do, we have mandatory training, which we do, a lot of which is provided by the state. The other training is development for the officers. I think training is really what I'm cutting this year. It's one of the most important things we do, both leadership and management-level training for the sergeants and specialized in different types of training for the officers. The one thing that keeps us out of trouble is having well-trained police officers. So I would much rather spend it on training than on legal expenses.
Okay.
So the one thing I realized in the packet that you didn't get was the capital articles, the requests. Yeah, so let me give you copies of those. So, one, two. I didn't bring them all. I made copies of, I apologize. So I'll give you two out of the three. For some reason, I printed one twice.
You can get one to lease from them, we can share.
No, that's, that's two, there's two separate ones, so.
We can share.
And I didn't print the other one, I apologize. I can get that to you. So one is the replacement of vehicle. It's actually gone up significantly since last year. The reason for that is Ford has, making a change. So Ford's, what they call the Interceptor SUV, which is their frontline police vehicle, is going hybrid next year. So with that, the preliminary numbers that I'm getting from MHQ, where we do most of our dealings, is about a $7,000 increase in vehicle cost. Again, that could come down with what the bid prices come out at. But again, hopefully over the life of the vehicle, now all that idle time when the cars are parked on the side of the road, they're not going to be burning fuel. So it's a, Ford has announced some big changes in their whole lineup of vehicles and that's, that's one of the things. So we're still waiting for the final numbers, but that's what they, the information they've gotten from Ford so far, what we're probably going to be looking at. So that's the vehicle. That's kind of what our replacement program has been to try and get us to that 100 to 125-mile range on the vehicles because of all the idle time that we then replace them before there's any major costs, which we've been kind of running into some costs lately, unfortunately, but we're, we're still okay.
So are you adding to the fleet or just replacing?
Replacing. This would just be a replacement.
So it's a new replacement?
Yeah, so we replace one, get rid of one.
Yeah, and there's a cycle that that runs on.
Yeah.
Every year they replace.
And they, and this is, including, say, a trade-in or?
Yeah, or we could do a trade. There's been discussion, I know, here with the building inspector in a vehicle or other vehicles, there's some room to do different things with vehicles that we could discuss. I would recommend that we trade or sell this one, it's not in the greatest shape right now. So I now realize what I did with this. So I just did numbers wrong on here. So I wonder if I gave that to FinCom and capital planning that way.
And all of the things that you're requesting for capital are on the plan?
They're all on our Public Safety Capital Plan.
Are they also on capital planning's plan?
Some of the things I've been discussing with Dave, so it's not on the current plan as it sits, but it is going on, well, based on the paperwork I've given them, it's on there now. So it wasn't on there last year. So the, there's two others. One, I apologize, it, the dollar figure on this is wrong, I'll give it to you anyways. For some reason, I left the car dollar figure on there. And I don't know why I did that. But it's $20,000 for, basically, for lack of a better term, equipment, replacing some radios and moving forward with a TASER program. So we're one of the few municipalities in the state now that don't carry TASERS. TASERS, if you're not familiar, are a less lethal force option for public safety. We've had a few encounters of late, which fortunately you've probably never heard about, but could have been headline news. And having that as an additional option is something that can hopefully reduce, potentially reduce injuries to police officers and to subjects that we're dealing with. We've had a few instances that I've actually been involved in myself lately, where Hudson has come to help us and simply by having that device at the scene has diffused the situation. And I, there's one recently where a young man looked at me and looked at the Hudson Off, Hudson Officer and says, "So if I don't do that, are you going to tase me?" And I just come and said, "Absolutely." And he looked and said, "Okay," and he came along with us, there was no more. You didn't hear about it, nobody else heard about it, and it was handled calmly. It's a very beneficial tool. For a lot of years, it was a controversial tool, but now it has become mainstream. When used and deployed properly, it reduces the risk of injury to everybody.
So how many are you looking at?
So what we're looking at is probably to do, they're changing right now, but I'm, what I originally got a quote for, I got in a quote for five and a quote for 10. I'd like to do between five and seven to have it that they transition between officers. We wouldn't be getting one that each officer would be issued.
Is there training that goes along with it?
There's a whole level of training. Fortunately, Tim Andre, who's one of our full-time officers, through his military training, is already certified as a trainer.
And he can teach others?
So he would be the one that would teach everyone.
So no cost to the town?
No, no additional cost to the town on that. And then the last is the, an upgrade to the facilities. We didn't have included in our capital plan for public safety, some upgrades to the facility downstairs. This is specifically to the video and security system. Couple of places where we are severely lacking is around our armory and our evidence room. If you've followed the news in the Commonwealth over the last few years, evidence rooms have been a major issue in a series, you know, source of loss for communities. I don't doubt any of our people, but security keeps honest people honest and reduces temptation. So the, part of this upgrade is, a lot of it is to upgrade the backend. We don't have the data storage for the video, sufficient for the video we already have. You know, even for the cameras we have in the parking lot, out back and on the side of the building and the lobby. So we only get about 15 days worth of storage now. So this is to upgrade the backend and then add cameras in some of those common areas as well as the booking, not the booking, the evidence facility and the armory, which are potential high-risk and high-loss areas.
So you're basically on that end of the building?
It's all public, it's all in the, anything that would happen in this would be in the police and fire side of the building.
Okay, I see.
Am I also correct in assuming since this is part of your capital plan, that this is for mitigation?
Yep, this, the plan would be that all this would come from mitigation. So we've had some extensive talks lately with the Finance Committee with capital planning. I think there's starting to be some consensus on mitigation funding, how it's applied and to ensure that it's applied to public safety for the changes we've been seeing and as a result of the development in the community. So we're trying to do as much as we can from a public safety perspective without ever touching a tax dollar. So we've been able to do that through a plan that Chief Zee and I have worked on. We sat down, we've, you know, we've had some, some meetings now with Finance and Capital Planning and it seems like, I hope for the future that this is actually going to get incorporated into the overall town capital plan. I think it's a good way to show the public that we're able to do these things, we're able to keep up with all the changes in the town without affecting their tax, tax dollar.
So on the storage capability, you said it has about 15 days. Is there an expected amount you're supposed to have a video for?
There's not necessarily an expectation, but I would like to see a minimum of 30. You know, sometimes we don't become aware of problems for quite a while. We need the ability to go back and be able to look and search through and find that. You know, I would, I'm hoping that through this, again, anytime you start adding more cameras, there's more data, but that this will get us actually closer to 60 days.
And going totally off subject, is there any thoughts about body cameras for the officers?
That has actually somewhat been in our current negotiations.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tom? Do we want to approve the capital requests this evening? Or have a chance to look them over?
Okay, you know, updated one that fixes that numbers on the one that's wrong, I apologize for that.
Okay. There were four of them too, right?
There were three.
Three, okay.
So do we wait until we get the updated one?
Yeah, I mean, I'll get that to you.
So you can do all the, need updated numbers at the same time?
Okay.
Okay.
So the only thing left is the animal control?
Animal control. And this is really where you're going to see the biggest changes. So go back two years ago, I started to look at animal control and the way things are handled here and some best practices. We, we had a major issue at a home here in town. And it's something that never should have gotten to the level that it was. I think through infective inspections from both animal control and animal inspectors, it probably wouldn't have been missed. And we worked a lot with the MSPCA and the Animal Rescue League of Boston to work things out and fix things. So I began after that working with a group with Central Mass Regional Planning on some shared services. We had a group of communities from our area and we thought we're working in the right direction. Shortly before budget time last year, a couple of the major players that had some of their real resources that we needed pulled out. So the, we kind of got stuck in another cycle of what we had. When I look at animal control, you know, we budget or have budgeted recently, you know, $2,500 to $3,000 to pay someone to do it. You know, we get $2,500 or $3,000 worth of work. Unfortunately, in this day and age, it's, it's a 24/7 job that requires professional certifications that can open the town up to liability. So I started looking into some other ways. I worked in a system before where we had contracted services for this. Just looking in our area, there's contracted services that are used in Northborough, Hudson, Maynard, Stowe, Southborough, Marlborough. So what, what I had looked into is what these towns are paying. I talked to a couple of the services and I got a ballpark on what it could cost us if we moved towards a contracted service. And that's where the $18,000 expense shows up in this year's budget. So what the plan would be, would be to, you know, write an RFP and put it out to bid. There's only a few companies that do this, but it doesn't preclude someone who may have worked for the town to form their own company and put in a bid. So I think that it would provide us a better level of service, more coverage. I've also been in discussion... I've also been in discussion with the Board of Health about this, about our animal inspection services, as it's something that we could wrap all into one, and I think we could do it all under this one cost. So, it's a, it's, you know, it's, it's a $14,000 increase in the budget, but it's more a change of our philosophy and change of way of doing business. But I think the townspeople expect to be able to get service when they need it. You know, I think this kinda still goes back to the way the town is starting to change or has been changing, and that people's expectations are changing. And, you know, when we pay somebody $2,900 a year, they have to work a full-time job to survive. So, that means there's a lot of time that they're not available to us, and we need them to be available. So, this is a way to do it and do it at relatively low cost versus hiring full-time personnel to oversee it.
Do you have any idea when you might have more information on this?
In terms of costs?
That you wanna share with us, like, you know, this company will be?
Yeah, this, well...
I guess it would be after the RFP?
Yeah, we'd have to do an RFP. I have an idea of probably the two companies that would most likely bid for it, that, there's one company that in this area does Northborough and Hudson, which is a good fit. There's another company, different company that does Marlborough, so again, another potential good fit, because they work very closely in the area already. So, those are kinda the companies that I would expect to be putting in bids, and I don't know of many others. But I do know that they, they all come highly recommended. One of the companies in particular, the Animal Rescue League of Boston, has tried to get them to take over a lot of towns further west, and they just can't handle it. They know they can't handle it, they'd have to open a whole nother company out there. So, these people are good at what they do, and they provide a very high level of service.
I think it's important that we do this. I think that routinely, people call having issues with dogs, and they don't get any response. And my fear is that one of these days, somebody's gonna get hurt after there's already been calls into the town to take care of it, and then we're in a world of hurt, and this causes a liability loop that we have.
I think, and I think we can tie our animal inspection services into that, and I've heard a lot of stories that, again, we're paying for $2,500 worth of work, and, you know, that I, why I kinda really looped in the Board of Health this year on that was that people that I know very well in town that may work for the town, you know, the job is getting called in. Instead of actually going and physically doing inspections, phone calls are being made or it's being asked, oh, it's just the same as last year. And again, if we have inspections that need to be done and looking out for the welfare of animals, preventing the spread of rabies, and different jobs that are being done, you can't phone it in. You have to be there and you have to put the time in. And I get it, we're really not paying for that level of service, but we have to start doing that.
All right. What's your ladies?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Well, thank you. I will, actually, I'll make those corrections now, and I'll email them up to you on that capital item. And, uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And if I don't see you all, have a great holiday break, and I hope everything's good.
Thanks, Tom.
I went till past 7:30, so Chief Zee doesn't get to go now.
No, I apologize. So, we had an appointment at 7:30, Conservation. Come on up. Did Tom make this? That's related when we really get into the budgets, and we need to, like, settle up.
Yeah, but Sam is here.
Don't show him, or I'll have one at home.
Yeah, I know.
They're in the bathroom, just saying.
All right, well, hopefully Bad Santa didn't show up tonight.
All right, ladies, would you like to fill us in? I think we're all good with the paperwork, I believe.
Sure. You want me to sort of give some background? So, we've been working with the Wendler family. The three siblings inherited the property on Peach Hill Road from their mother when she passed away, and they have estate taxes that they need to pay by the end of this year. So, a way that we were able to give the town some time to apply for some grants to fund the project, the acquisition, SVT suggested we could enter into an option agreement with them in the amount of their estate taxes, and then give the town that extra time to, to work on getting some grant funding. So, that is what the deadline is about. They owe their estate taxes by the end of the year. So, what we will do is, after entering into the memorandum of understanding with the town, we will enter into an option agreement with the family for $25,000, and, and then we'll hold that until the town is ready to purchase and has contracts in hand, and then we'll transfer the option, assign the option over to the town. If, for whatever reason, we have to, the family's not willing to wait any longer, and we have to acquire the property before the town, you know, if the town's not ready at the time that the family is done with the option, then we'll do that, but we'll come back and do a purchase and sale agreement with the town, and just kinda get everything squared away about how we're gonna transfer the land itself if we had to buy it. So, we would only ever buy it with the intent to transfer it back to the town when the town is ready.
Okay.
So, the memorandum covers all of that.
Do you have a copy? Or do you want this copy?
This one?
This one and this one, three.
All right. And then, Conservation meets this Wednesday, so we'll sign it also, so that'll get it done before the end of the year.
All right. So, questions or comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
So, that then shoehorns into another topic. Our open space, one of the reasons we need time to apply for grants is our open space plan. I was under the assumption expired the, at the end of the year. Apparently, it expired in July, and without a current open space plan, we can't apply for grants. So...
Yeah, right? Exactly. So, I went to the planning board and said, "Ah!" And Tim put me in touch with someone at Central Mass Regional Planning, and there is grant money available for preparing the document, because it can be quite expensive. We meet the qualifications for the grant in that our town has less than 6,000 people, and our current plan has expired. Who knew that that would be a good thing? Accidentally, we did a good thing. So, but it does need to be signed. It's a rolling admission, so as soon as we submit it, we should hear about whether we are gonna get approved. But it does need your signature, Chris.
Okay.
So, it's a pretty basic document. It just, we need to fill out our name?
Check the box.
Check the box, pretty much.
Do you wanna fill it out and then?
Oh, yeah, yep.
So, I'll just sign?
Right, yep. There's a page, I think it's the third page, it says Executive Officer, yep.
Okay.
Motion to apply for the grant.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
See, Good Santa did show up.
So, I'm not totally...
Wait, your budget's coming.
Pick the hill, Carolyn, pick the hill. I'm not sticking around for that.
And then I had an informational thing. I have been talking with the Conservation Agent in Hudson, Pam Helnic, about possibly doing a joint, working together to do a single-use plastic bag, bag ban.
Can you say that again?
Apparently not. I didn't, couldn't say it the first time.
Okay.
Because if we, if Brolin were to do this and adopt it, it wouldn't be very effective, considering Highland Commons straddles both properties, both towns, and Market Basket and Lowe's are both in Hudson. So, they seem very supportive, and if I'm gonna meet with them the first week of January, meet with Pam and someone from Sudbury who worked on their plastic bag ban, get more information about what's involved, and I'm sure come back to you. But wanted to let you know.
So, I heard on the news, so this is happening in Boston?
In Boston, more and more places.
The Lander just passed one.
Shrewsbury.
Cambridge was the big one, I think, over the summer.
Actually, Peter came to us a couple, like, a year and a half, two years ago, to see how we felt about it, and we were all very supportive, but again, you know, brought up the Hudson. Yeah, exactly.
You know, Westboro just did it, because I've just been, it's my shop, and I just realized. Shrewsbury's had it for a while. Northboro tried to pass it last year.
I've got bags in my car, I just keep forgetting to take them in the store.
Yep, exactly. So, yeah.
Brown paper, right. That's not as convenient, so then you're gonna remember your bags.
Actually, I have some that you roll up, that fit in your purse that are...
Yeah, I have a couple.
And those work very well.
Yep, yep. And Indian Head Farm has already started using paper. So, you know, it's definitely where plastic ban use, plastic bag use is going. And I think I personally would like to not see any more Market Basket bags in my trees.
Yeah.
You don't wanna see them go with the...
No, 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 they get stuck.
Do they really?
Oh, yeah. I have plastic bag trees in my yard.
Oh, boy.
So, I personally would be very happy.
Do you want me to, do you wanna take these and then just give us copies or a copy?
Sure, after we sign them.
Yeah.
Wednesday night, yeah, can leave some in your box.
Make sure I've got them all.
And I think LOU's needs to notarize the MOU. I don't remember, I think so.
Probably, yeah, yep.
She's here on Wednesday night.
Yep.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And please be kind to the budget.
I think we already approved theirs.
Yeah, ours is like, ours is so easy.
Everybody is, it's like...
I know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Bye-bye.
Well, let's move on to the Fire and EMS budgets.
He's crying. He's already crying.
If I didn't know Chief Galvez, it could be so long-winded, I would've said no, but...
You didn't realize he had, like, five budgets?
No, I didn't, no, I didn't even think of that. Let's just, again, the budget, some supporting information, the same as I gave you last year, for those of you who are here. Some supporting, just how the budget breaks down more, rather than just that front sheet that we're required to give in, so just some more breakdowns on how it, how it goes.
All right. Do you wanna go over it with us or go over the budget?
Sure, real quickly, the expenses going down 2,450, and the increases to the other budget for call wages, given a step increase to everybody on the, on the wage and classification plan. And that included, you actually see the budget number for call wages goes down, because proposed in here is another 12-hour a week per DM slot, 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., so that we would have somebody in the station guaranteed 24 hours a day, rather than just 12 hours a day, so that, again, that would be a firefighter or EMT, so that 2:00 in the morning, the ambulance would go out the door, and the rest of the EMTs would at least meet them on scene, so it's a little quicker response time for, and guaranteed response time for that. We've applied for a safer grant last year. We didn't get it for the hiring of firefighters. It's coming again sometime. It's supposed to be December, but looks like it's not gonna be till January before it comes out again, until we'll look at applying for that again as it comes forward. But, and again, it takes, it takes eight to 10 months for them to award grants once, once you've submitted them. So, I think that's pretty, pretty much it for the budget as far as, other than what I noted in the, in the cover letter, that if we don't approve that 12-hour a week per DM position, then we'll have to put a few more dollars into, into the call wages and
Which is more cost-effective, shall I ask?
Well, it costs about $98,000 a year to put one person on 12 hours a day, seven days a week. That's at an average of $22 an hour for, for call wage, so that we, and we pay them straight time for that. So, we would have to put back in, I had it figured out here. It would be about $15,000 to $20,000 difference.
Okay.
And this is, once again, following the recommendations of the MRA study?
All of it is, yeah, going forward, yeah. And again, if, if, if this monies, these monies are here and we are awarded the grant, then we'd be able to use these monies to offset the cost of the grant that we'd be applying, reapplying for. And again, the grant pays 75% a year the first two years and 35% the third year, and so this would be, we wouldn't need to go to town meeting for more monies to pay that offset cost. We would just, we reduce this position or pay for it out of that, so...
Can you speak a little bit to the difference the time and response time makes to somebody's outcome?
Yeah, right now, I get, again, the most noticeable improvement to response time has been during the daytime, where we now have two people on 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. seven days a week. So, within two minutes, the ambulance or fire truck leaves the station. And again, it's, it's critical for somebody having a heart attack or that's severe bleeding or whatever the incident is. Fires, catch a fire when it's small before it gets big, et cetera. And right now, so we're, we're out of the station within about two minutes at night. At night, it can vary anywhere from, again, tonight, we had an officer training, so we just had an ambulance call. Within two minutes, the truck left the station because there was somebody here. Typically, at night, on a night in the evening hours, it'd probably be four to six minutes at a minimum before a truck left the station. People gotta come from home and, and get here. 2:00 in the morning, it's a, it's a double that time because of the fact that people have to get up. That's older people have to go to the bathroom before we leave. Get up, get to the car. If it's the wintertime, you gotta scrape off the windshield before you drive to the station, and then get here, get in the station, get the truck and go. So, it's a significant time delay that we're trying to overcome. And again, when somebody's in crisis, every, every minute counts. And again, my, my take is, the person at 2:00 in the afternoon, the person at 2:00 in the morning should have the same level of care and protection, so...
Okay.
So, let's talk about the elephant in the room, because it's gonna come up either tonight or...
Sure.
When one of us is at the dump.
That'd be great.
Well, just saying, being honest here.
Go ahead. It's where all the conversations happen.
Well, you know, yeah, so, so, Fire Chief Litchwell.
Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal, thank you. You know, you and I have had...
Well, we've had lots of discussions.
Lots of discussions.
And that's led to a lot of the recent discussions we've had about communications.
Correct.
When the position was first created and approved, and with my liaison, who's not here anymore, there was a discussion about that position being salary, $80,000 a year, and it was usually about 55 hours a week, including meetings, because there's meetings, calls, everything all rolled into one. And then, the, the number scared people, for whatever reason. The number scared people. And again, it's not, it's not incompatible with the area fire inspectors and what they get hourly, overtime and et cetera. That dollar amount is still pretty close. So, again, I've, I can't tell you how many times I've answered emails and questions and about overtime and, geez, why is this, why is he here, why is he there? I'm tired, I'm just basically tired of talking about overtime costs, which I knew was gonna happen from day one, and that's why I rolled it all into one to make it a salary position, because there are gonna be nights meetings, there's gonna be inspections at, at 7:00 a.m. or 5:00 p.m. or whenever they are because of all the construction that's going on here and everything else. So, that, that overtime is going to increase significantly. You know, it might be another five hours a week with all of this construction projects to keep following along with it and the meetings and everything else, so... else, so, again, this is a way to stabilize the budget, it's the money that was appropriated in total for the position, wages, and overtime, it's a flat rate, and, and so, it, it, again, it stabilizes the budget, and stabilizes overtime.
Right, and I'm sure that you can understand the concern of the folks, just because you have an overtime budget doesn't mean that you need to use an overtime budget.
Correct.
So, with the money that you're proposing for him, if you were to add up, this current year, his salary plus his overtime, are we right around that number, are we higher, are we lower?
No, we're gonna be right in that neighborhood, right in the 78, right in the 78 to 80.
Okay, all right.
And again, when it was first proposed, and then there was discussions back and forth, and it was changed to an hourly, and I was told, don't go over the 80, again, and then, so, and that was our marching orders, so that's, again, so this is two years old, so this, and we're still asking for the same number.
Well, I think it was originally because that number was too high for folks.
To swallow.
Yes, and that's why we were trying to reduce it, and then hoped that you would not use the overtime, but because it was allocated...
Again, when you get somebody that's hourly, and they're here late, whether it's on an emergency call, or whether it's training, or, or, or a meeting, you have to pay them overtime, you can't just say, oh, well, don't, don't work on Fridays, it's not, it's hourly, it's, it comes under FLSA, and you don't have much choice, you have to pay them overtime, so.
Right, if he does the time, you have to pay him.
Yeah, so, again, I'm trying to, again, it's the money that's allocated, so...
So now you're talking about a salary, correct?
Yes, that's just putting all the money into the salary line, rather than into wages, salaries, and, and partial and overtime.
And has person, you haven't talked with personnel about this?
No, I have not.
Okay, because that would be my next suggestion, is to get the blessing of personnel for this, and as well as the, next thing you're probably gonna talk about, regular full-time wages, because personnel recommended 2.25 COLA increase for everyone, unless there was a salary adjustment.
And that's, I took the, again, without a lot of instruction, direction, and et cetera, we have a wage and classification plan that has steps in it, so the whole plan gets a COLA adjustment each year, so everybody gets a COLA, whether you're on a level one...
Unless you're getting a wage, a salary adjustment, I, I think that was my understanding from personnel, but...
But the, the whole, the whole plan, as, as you approved, and it's here, it's, it has a wage adjustment to the whole thing, the whole thing goes up 2.25%.
Right.
So that's, that's what you...
I think you gave steps also.
You have, so then I gave a step, you move up, because the person's been here a year, so how, how else do you move up, if, and typically, a plan like that, if you, if you're, it's time and grade, so you're here a year, you're here 10 years, you're at the top step, you may move, you may get jumped up two steps one year, because, boy, this, this person's just a, a rock star, whatever, they, you know, they've got other education certifications, or, or what have you, or you may hire somebody that is above the bottom, and you might move them up, so they might only be here five years before they get the top step, but how else do you give, how else do you move up the ladder?
Well, I think because our salaries were pretty much in line for the, for the jobs, that's why they gave just a COLA across the board, and if there were some that were a little low, they would get a salary adjustment, or, or of some kind.
But, and I guess our take is, then why do we have a 10-step plan, if we're not gonna use the 10 steps?
Well, this is the first year we've not used the 10 steps, so I think everybody's always gotten a step and a COLA every year, and it's, it's not sustainable, and I think when you compare to other towns, the specific jobs were in the ballpark, and that...
I'm not saying we're not.
Right.
But, again...
So, I think that was what their suggestion was for this year, next year it might be, you know, take, take two steps, and whatever, you know, I don't know, but I think that you do need to run that by personnel.
Oh, sure.
And I think you also...
On the first, on the, on the fire prevention, fire inspectors issue, they can't vote on it, he's related to one of the people on personnel.
We can step in, one, two, or three of us can step in, it's not a problem.
So, I mean, I don't know how, it's complicated, at the moment.
Tom, if you guys are gonna look at that, can you check, I think, I'm seeing salaries here, but I think we need to know what overtime is paid in places, too, I don't think we can just take what's up online, and, yeah, we need to, we need to know the whole amount that they're being paid, in order to make any sort of valid comparison.
Correct. I have a question, on the inspections, are we the only town that has an inspector go out at night to inspect anything, building, like you said, he works overtime, most of them, for a small town, I mean, don't they do a lot of inspections during the day?
Most of them are.
Correct, okay.
Majority, but training, emergency calls, and, and other meetings, sort of typically at night, so.
Paul, why is, why, why is Dave the only person that seems to be at meetings and paid overtime, and all of you participate and don't get paid overtime?
Your salary.
I'm on salary.
So is in you.
So I don't get overtime.
You're proposing a salary form this year, and it was proposed one or two years ago.
Correct.
You could have a salary at any number that you, or the select board, or Dave approves, it doesn't have to be 80, it could be 100, it could be 20.
So there would be no overtime for the fire marshal with the salary?
Why is he the only one that gets overtime, it seems, in the town?
No, the two, two full, two full-time firefighter EMTs get overtime, police officer, patrolmen get overtime, the police sergeants get overtime.
They are entitled to it, but I'm guessing not so many get it.
I would disagree.
But, why couldn't, why couldn't?
We shouldn't be debating this, probably, this evening.
No, so if we could have you go back to the person, and when are you meeting with personnel this Wednesday?
I don't know.
You have a meeting Wednesday?
Have room on the agenda for Paul?
He's like, what, I gotta go?
I can double-check with Claire.
I'm happy to go anytime, so.
Okay.
Let us know, and then one of us can...
You're not meeting again until...
We were gonna bring that up, but one of you might have to go, because Claire can't vote on things.
Yeah, two of us can go, because then this way we make it...
6:30, be there.
6:30 is your meeting?
Yes.
Wednesday.
Correct.
Are you guys both gonna go to that one?
I have to look at my calendar.
Okay, let me know, because I already had two things that day, so that would be the third at a completely other, different time of day.
I don't know if I would check.
Really?
Ooh.
That actually is a draw.
All right, one of the, of the things I just wanted to point out, Paul, is that in your, which you're gonna probably talk to personnel anyway, you're going from 24 to 22, are you reducing?
I made a couple of mistakes, and that was already fixed.
And 24 to 22, okay, all right.
Yeah, we made a mistake.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's in rush to get it in, all of a sudden.
You were aware of that. Do you want to have, do you have anything else to tell me, or tell us about?
I don't think so, it's all pretty, it's self-explanatory with the, with the other sheets that I've given you, the capital is, as Chief Galvin said, it's all within what we've developed for capital, ones, and we've also applied for two federal grants, one for the breathing apparatus, and one for the pumper tanker, the pumper tanker would replace engine two and the tanker now, so we'd be reducing the fleet by one large vehicle, and so it takes, we just applied in October, it takes anywhere from eight to 10 months, typically, before you get a notice that you've either been rejected, or that you're still in the running, or you're awarded a grant, so, so if, if we're successful, then it's only the 5% match for, for either one of them, one we approved at town meeting, which was the breathing apparatus, that 5% match, but we didn't put in the one for the truck. I'm not holding my breath on the one for the truck, I think we got a better chance than one for the breathing apparatus, so I didn't want to tie up, you know, $20,000, $25,000 worth of more of town funds, if it wasn't gonna be successful.
So you have 400?
440 for the truck.
For the pumper, you, a new 4x4?
To replace the 1998 four-wheel-drive pickup that was a military surplus.
Okay, so is the 4x4 electric, so, or anything like that?
No, they don't have anything right now, yet.
All right, and then the self-contained breathing?
Yep.
And that's not inclusive of the items that you got from either Marlboro or Hudson a few months?
No, those are to, to get us by, I mean, the used ones of theirs are 10 years old or whatever, but they're in better shape than our, some of ours that are 15 years old, and, and the ones that we have out of service, so that's a, kind of a stopgap.
And the repairs, I can understand, repairs are repairs, you guys are gonna need it, but is that the big four?
And then, you know, there's 121 still in capital, a payment on the ladder truck, so that's why capital's high, this coming year it looks higher than, than most of the others going out, then the next major purchase, the next pumper isn't till 2024, so it's a ways out, so.
Well, I suspect the way that Finance Committee is looking at the public safety money, is that if you don't use it all in one year, then you can save it for a bigger item in a future year.
Correct, and that's kind of the plan that we put together.
And have you got that in mind?
Yeah, absolutely, Chief Galvin and I put that together, with that in mind, going all the way through, so we, we built it out 30 years.
And John helped with that, right?
And John Solera, yeah, did, did all the data entry and everything, and built the spreadsheet, and so what it does is, in, in talking to FinCom and Buzz, his idea was, you know, it'd be like 80/20, you know, 80% toward capital, 20% toward staffing, and this coming year, I think, he, he looked at it, thought, oh, you're pretty close to what I had envisioned, and it was actually 18% toward staffing, and then the rest toward capital, and again, as, as years go on, you might spend 200 next year, but we're actually bringing in 600, so 400 would be pushed off, until you had that other big purchase of $600,000 for a new engine in 2024, $300,000 for an ambulance, and, and, you know, so again, we, as Chief Galvin had said, we, we looked at it as, how, how can we best utilize those dedicated funds, so as not to impact the tax rate and the taxpayers, so it's mitigation funds, it's ambulance revenues, put that into a, a, a fund to help to offset those costs, so that we don't have to come to the taxpayers for money for any equipment down the road, again, and we projected it out 30 years, and it also has some monies that will go into additional staffing as time grows, and the town grows, we'll put more money toward staffing, which, again, helps to keep my, having to come out of the taxpayers' pocket to pay for the staffing as well, so, pretty fortunate the way that that whole mitigation was set up, because a lot of other towns don't do that, I know, I have a friend that, Chief in Athol, they have, we got a mall almost identical to this one, they get zero mitigation dollars.
We learned after the first mall.
So, yeah, so...
So when you go out and you look for the pumper truck, and your cost is from here to here, do you shoot for here, I mean, not that I want you to buy, like, cheapy-cheapy, but, so, where do you...
No, no, we, we looked at, it's, actually, instead of a custom pumper that's, that's four doors and seats eight, it's a two-man cab, because this needs just to haul, basically it needs to haul water, and have a pump on it, and be able to pump water, so, so now we're going for the lower end of the spectrum, if, if, if we're replacing that tender with something like it, you're probably talking $300,000, and if we were gonna place, replace the engine that we have with one like it, a custom pumper, that's probably $500,000 or more, so you're talking $800,000, and we're looking at something at 450 to cover both, so, trying to be as...
Frugal.
Frugal.
Frugal, frugal, word of the day for budget.
That budget word, yes, Buzz's budget word, but, yeah, so...
I just wanted to touch back a little bit on the pickup truck, right now, can you tell me kind of what you guys use that for?
What do we use it for, we use it for almost everything, picking up hose at a fire scene, to picking, to picking up breathing apparatus, bringing it back and forth, again, now with, with daytime staff, they might be running to get parts, to, to pick up parts or something like that, or we might send, somebody takes it to, to training, they go to the fire academy, they take one of our vehicles to a training, so it's a multipurpose, the, the next one would be used for the same.
I just, I, I do understand that, that you might need something to carry equipment and that sort of thing, but I also want to sort of have some mechanism, so we're not driving a pickup truck around just to go from here to there, because...
And, and again, the new one would probably be a little more economical than that beast, the four-door beast that's out there, that's, like I said, I think it's, I think it's 1998, and it was a military surplus, and it's, it's done its time.
From a green community standpoint...
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd probably be a two-door eco-friendly pickup.
The best you could do.
If we could get an electric one, we would, but they, they're not making them yet, they're supposed to be maybe next year, but who knows, you know, it's just, and the range, the range of the pickups are.
And I'm assuming that you do need the cab in the back to hold the, or the...
Stuff.
You need it to hold equipment. Because, yes, because I'd really like to get rid of the pickup truck altogether, and have a shared sort of vehicle where people can tool around if they need to, inspections, that sort of thing, but I don't think we can do that with, if you need the truck for hauling large items.
No, like I said, it's, it carries just five-inch hose when we have a fire, and a lot of heavy equipment, and...
Because that kind of begs the question, why would, if I'm going to training, why would I take the truck, when, if something happens, God forbid, and you need the truck, but it's sitting 15 miles away in a training session during the day, so, isn't it cheaper to take your own car and put in for mileage?
More, more paperwork, right?
But paperwork's mine, paperwork's mine.
No, it's not.
Well, I just...
It's, again, they're, they're on duty, they're on town time, we send them, you know, we don't pay, again, we don't pay them for the time that they take to, to, to go and come, especially like the call members, when they go to a class, so if we can provide them transportation, the recruit, when, when the guys are going to recruit class, we don't pay them at all, they just, they give their time, so we give them a truck to take, and they put the breathing apparatus they have to take with them, and they have a vehicle to do that, so, so we try to, again...
I know, but if there's, if there's items, if there's meetings that can be better serviced, and even though I know June loves paperwork and receipts and stuff like that as much as you do, I'd rather have it do that, and pay for a car that gets 30 miles a gallon, than for a beast out there that probably gets eight.
Well, that one probably does, but a newer one would probably be double that, so 16 or so, for, and again, a smaller truck.
And I, obviously, there's a concern for safety, too, again, if you need the truck for something, and it's sitting in still, it's not gonna do...
It doesn't, it doesn't happen often, but, yeah.
But still, I don't want to be that caller, I need that truck.
So, one more comment, unless you have one?
Just one?
Go ahead, I'm good.
I was just gonna say that I believe your budget, it is, is at eight and a half to nine percent increase.
Overall.
Yeah, I think you might want to take a look, perhaps your, your meeting with personnel will help the budget, so I would just suggest maybe that we keep this on the, yeah, put this down for next meeting, which isn't till January 2nd.
Okay.
That good?
No problem.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Hey, look at you.
Talking to that for more.
Did you vote animal control for that?
We did.
You voted it?
Yeah, we did. Is this for...
That's the one where he made the correction, where he had 47.
Yeah, it's all different. That's all three of them, and that top one is the one that I had to correct, apologize.
Oh, all right, do you need one?
We're gonna talk about this the next meeting, or, yeah, I'll, I'll have to say it email, because...
Oh, no, they're all different. All right, can, he'll send them.
Bring it back next time.
Yeah, he'll, well, maybe he'll send it to us in soft copy, too.
He did, I just printed it.
Okay, great, great.
I just added a signature on it.
Great.
Hope it's a nice week.
Oh, yeah, right here.
All right, making a pile on the floor here.
Should we have Deeggo, since he's the only one... That was slightly sarcastic there, Mr. Highway Guy.
My wife loves it.
No. Well, here, let me return the favor. Here, you can have a hauls. There you go. Merry Christmas. Do you want an eyebrow? I love you an eyebrow. Let June put these on carefully so they wouldn't rip the real ones off. Just saying. Oh, jeez. Find out when I take them off. There you go.
I'm assuming you have the copies that I gave you the other day.
I do.
Okay. So this is snow. It's basically unchanged other than pay adjustments.
Highway snow we're doing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you have a chance to meet with personnel?
I had not.
Mr. Bradley. Mr. Bradley, you're going to have a full agenda on Wednesday. Perhaps you go home and make cookies. Just saying. I think dinner. Can you do dinner? Can you make us dinner? Look at him. I am. You're a mad set.
No, you did that.
Twitch, the lights.
I think I'm a guy at a deli if you're going back there.
All right. So you'll talk to personnel about your concerns from a couple of weeks ago about wages?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to go over anything?
On snow, it's basically unchanged.
It is what it is.
That's pretty flat.
And I think slowly they've been trying to increase the amount in the budget for the snow because I know we overspend anyway, but this is good.
It's the same as last year.
Yeah.
Other than the-
Did you have coaching from?
No, I, well, my wife and June, I have to thank June for her patience in guiding me through all this.
You're holding up?
All right. So, all right.
And it's just wages on the checks, don't you, right?
Do you want to do highway or public buildings?
Do public buildings next, if you don't mind.
Okay. Thank you.
I got it.
Okay.
So there are some increases with additional contracts. Now that the eighteen-seventy building is up and running with the elevator.
Right.
There's just a few increases with that. Also added a little bit to riches of services.
Is that cleaning?
So some of this is a little bit gray because we're not sure what's going to happen with that cleaning.
Right.
So we wanted to put some money in there. I'm not sure we want to get into that now, but-
No.
Okay. So there are some slight increases. Maintenance on all the buildings is becoming more and more, so.
Did you have a chance to look at a contract with the analytics folks that we had talked about?
For this building?
Yeah, for the, we had talked about having something where that you had, you could call up and get maintenance as needed with the analytics folks.
So I'm not sure there's actually a contract in place.
No, there's not. That's why I was asking if you'd had a chance.
I have not.
No. On that list that you have.
Yeah. So-
So that may need to also be added in your, in some fashion because I think you're going to need them.
Do you, how would he get a number for that?
He has a number.
What kind of number are we talking about?
Oh, not a dollar number, but he has a number to call. I don't have a phone number.
Seven. Seven, do I hear seven?
He has not had time to check into a dollar number.
Okay.
He needs to call him, talk to him.
Well, I did, you know, but I don't know enough about the analytics, so.
We had no, we were given no estimates whatsoever, just, you know, he needs to be able to call somebody if something goes wrong with those building analytics now that they're in.
So like the heating in the building when it's way too cold or way too hot?
Or if one of those pieces breaks, or if the computer breaks, or if, yeah, something-
Who do you call?
He needs to-
Who are you going to call?
Call some masters.
It needs, there needs to be a maintenance contract of some sort.
All right.
So that's a possibility, then. Can you just, part-time wages? Start at the top, I guess. That is, is that Leanne?
No.
No. Oh, that was?
That's the number we carry for the maintenance for eighteen-seventy and library.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. And you, did you just tell me, you just told me, oh, yes, you told us what the purchase of services was and the contracted services. Office supplies, I mean.
The biggest expense or changes in expenses is elevator and water testing and things that weren't on last year.
Okay. Are they doing water testing at the?
Doing it at the library.
Just at the library? Okay.
And the tiny tank?
Right. Which isn't on there.
So do we need to add something around that as well for the tight tank?
That's probably going to be a warrant.
That would be an article, a warrant article of some kind. I would think the library would be.
That would seem even feasible.
Have they been in touch with you about that?
I've talked to them a little bit. I've had a few people look at the, try to come up with a, the future doesn't look bright over there.
Right. But I would think that, are they expecting you to look into the cost or something, or?
I think, we're kind of sharing that responsibility, ability with Joe, myself, and Bob at the library. So we're just trying to get roughly now some ideas as to where we go with that.
Right.
And like I said, I've had two people look at it, and, you know, had they not want to do an addition over there, we could probably get away with doing something, but now you tie the addition in, it really shortens up the property that's already a postage stamp. It's going to be difficult to do something.
Right.
We haven't given up.
Yeah. Okay. Questions? Any questions?
So this isn't facilities, correct? Because that's like the other elephant in the room that we need to talk about.
It is, Mrs. Williams.
It is.
So I know you raised some concern, and we all hear your concern, and we want to be here to help you. Is there anything that you're thinking of to split?
So at one point, we kind of toyed with the idea of Joe taking some of those responsibilities on. I think it's too much. I think it needs, it's to the point now where it needs a person.
Yeah, he's already maxed out, so I can't see him. And, you know, like if he's here, hey, how do I flip this, turn this on?
Right, right.
Done. But anything more than that, I can't see it going over to him.
It's, there's a lot going on with the buildings and the age that they're now at. I mean, two calls today for heat at the eighteen-seventy, again, and the elevator malfunction here, you know.
Well, it's good to get in, take it up tonight. I would have been having the meeting from the elevator.
It's working now, but, you know, not big deals, but it's just every day there's something that's going on with one of the buildings somewhere.
Okay. And that's kind of a whole conversation on its own, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Well, we-
You have to come back to us.
I was thinking that perhaps after the first of the year, that maybe we put this on an agenda and just discuss it, and whoever needs to be here needs to be here.
Okay.
All right?
I'm good with that.
We'll let you know.
Sure.
Okay.
While we're on the building thing, I see there's a, and it's something on the agenda tonight for the entryway door and the ice. Okay, can you just throw that at the building committee and we'll deal with it as a committee?
Yeah, that would work.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, because honestly, my only concern last week when I hobbled it on crutches, I had a backpack that probably weighed about ten pounds worth of crap that I needed for the meeting, and I had a really hard time getting in the door. I was just going to stand there till somebody came in to let me in, so, because you can't, you can't pull the door, move the crutch, get in the door without the door taking you out. And I know that the door is ADA compliant, I get that, it's the right height, it's the right weight. You can't get in on a pair of crutches. So that's my only concern.
All right.
All right.
We'll get that. We'll try to get some bids on what that cost will be. So this is the big one. So the increase in wages, that number reflects what my suggestion is.
Yeah.
So that number's probably going to change.
Well, I mean, it's a conversation you have to have with personnel. If you've got the information to back it up, you know, that works.
Okay.
We want to, we want to keep the guys. We know that they do a great job.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. We already said-
I think we have a stack of them that we have to go through after personnel.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just wondering if you approve the money?
What's that?
You can still approve the money. If personnel doesn't approve it, it's just he can't spend it. So per se, you don't have to hold up the budget for personnel's vote? Just to throw that out there.
So we don't have to hold up the budget?
So if he budgets for an increase, say-
Right.
-in the budget, but personnel does not give it, that doesn't mean that he's going to automatically spend it.
Gotcha.
So budget for ten, they approve eight, two-dollar sits.
Correct.
Yeah. So you're saying personnel has the last word?
Well, Finance Committee and town people have the last last.
Oh, I know that, I know that, but-
But, yes.
What was I reading, something? I think I was emailing with you and something about the selectmen have the last word on something or other.
Was that fire? Fire salaries? Strong chief?
Yes, I think it was. Strong chief.
Yes.
Okay.
You could still put it in as budget, per se.
Right.
But the actual personnel part of the, any pay increases.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I don't know if that's easier for you.
Then it goes to the finance, and they approve it, correct?
You hope they approve it, yes.
Yes.
All right. So questions on the highway budget?
What's a skywalker?
Bucket truck.
That's what I thought it was.
Cool.
Which we need to purchase. I'm trying to negotiate now with the town of Holden to purchase their used truck from the municipal light.
Oh, yeah.
Nice.
So I don't know if they're looking sometime in calendar year twenty to replace that truck.
It's in good condition and all that other stuff.
Perfect for what we would use it for. You know, right now, we're paying, and we get a pretty good deal, fifteen hundred dollars a day to rent the truck with an operator, and this company's working with us, we do all the groundwork. But in three days, I depleted my tree budget, so it doesn't make much sense to pay that kind of money when the guys are more than capable of doing the work. And I'm thinking this truck is probably, I'm going to guess it's around a fifteen-thousand-dollar purchase. So, I mean, it's a one-year payback. And if you look around, town trees are a problem, and it's going to get worse with the gypsy mall.
We did hear that at our coffee from someone who was very concerned about, what do we do about trees that we want to take down?
Driving up and down Crosby, I mean, I see a lot of old trees, but I don't see any that are like ready to tip, but I'm not a tree person, so I can't tell you.
Yeah, there's routinely-
There's a lot.
-branches that are scary. The other pieces, we also own our street lamps now.
Right.
So if any of those need to be changed, you either have to-
Up goes the truck.
Yeah.
True.
Dave, what's the reach of the truck you're thinking about?
Fifty-five feet. So we won't be able to do everything, but we'll be able to do a majority of the work.
So would that be a work?
You can sell rides in the truck, just like a hot air balloon.
She wants a ride on everything.
I do, I do want a ride on everything. Wait till I plow your roads.
Pass out, you see the claws.
Oh, 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 there you go.
So would this be possibly a warrant article?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless there's enough room here. All right.
Okay. All right. All right, so there's no more questions? Would you all like to make a motion, put this on hold?
Yeah, I have no issues in general. I just think it'd be easier just to, when personnel comes back, if we just go through-
We just run it through.
Okay. So you want to hold on to it?
Yeah.
All right. Sound good?
So just one more thing. I didn't realize that capital purchases were supposed to come at the same time here. So this is a learning curve. I did put in for a new truck, not a replacement, a new, in addition to, because I'm not sure if you've driven by here, but you see the dump truck in the parking lot? That's what I've been driving, because when the guys are working, they take the utility truck with the tools in it, so.
Okay. So, yeah, you've got to-
I'm just looking to get a smaller truck, nothing like the big one we have, four-wheel-drive with a plow, that has a utility box on it that can keep tools in it so that when I do come to these buildings, I have some basic tools to do the work I need to do. And, you know, the truck that we have, the one ton should go with the guys on the crew when they're working. They shouldn't be taking equipment out of that, throwing it in the back of the dump truck to go to the job. That doesn't really make a lot of sense. So that was the only other thing I had.
Okay. Want to give them a form for that?
I already submitted it to-
Capital planning?
Capital.
Oh, okay, good, good. All right.
All right.
Can you send us a copy, too?
I can. I will.
Great.
You're supposed to authorize-
Can you come back and talk to us?
Absolutely.
Excuse me?
You authorize them?
What now?
Can you send us a copy too?
I can, I will.
Great.
You're supposed to authorize-
Can you come back and talk to us?
Absolutely.
Excuse me?
Do you authorize them?
What now?
Authorize?
Capital requests, has there a point?
Yes, that's why I'm asking him to send us a copy.
Yeah, I think it might be useful to let everybody know, especially since you now have Personnel, capital planning, and all these things that we didn't have, I think it would be helpful to all of our department heads to know exactly
Yeah.
where they need to go with what.
Right.
Am I correct there? Yeah, 'cause you can't expect him to just-
Don't go around, next year'll be better.
Yeah.
That's okay. We appreciate everything that you do, truly.
Thank you.
It's a giant undertaking that you've taken, and you're here, and you're still here.
It's not a challenge, I don't wanna do it.
Well, you came to the right town then, there, Mr. David, just saying. Thank you, Merry Christmas, we don't see you.
All right. Let's see, fire.
Oh, Mr. Bradley's.
If one of you aren't available for that one night, Peter would-
No.
Okay. Would volunteer-
No.
Okay.
It's a Selectmen duty, no.
That's what I just wanted to check.
If Chris can't go, I'll go.
I told him, the only way you allow him one night, if he joined for the remaining two years?
There is, I mean, there is an opening on that committee.
See, that's what I was trying to tell him, but he wasn't listening.
But there's no like ad hoc thing, you really gotta sign up for, you know.
I'm trying to get him to sign up.
Ah.
In his spare time with EDC and-
That's okay.
One of us will be there.
But you, to be on Personnel, you have to not be on anything else.
Yep.
It's kinda like Finance Committee.
I thought that was FinCom.
And FinCom.
It's also Personnel.
Yeah, that was me too. That's why we lost him.
Yeah.
So if you get tired of the yellow ones, look at just one. I tried.
All right, moving on to the Agriculture Commission budget. I think this is an easy one.
Yeah.
I thought it was like level, wasn't it?
Yep.
Boom, chakalaka, lakaboom.
Motion to approve the level funded agricultural budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, ZBA? I think there's some extra sheets in here, but-
Yeah, I think we'll have to go through all the paperwork at the end, they've kinda smushed around.
ZBA has an increase, and that's basically because they've given LeAnn some hours. So, it's up from $600 to $2,800, $2,200 of it is the part-time wages. Everything else is level.
How many's that for LeAnn-ish?
Eight hours a month.
There you go.
What did she say?
Eight hours a month.
Yes.
Okay.
There it is.
Yeah, and they absolutely could not, they have to have somebody to take minutes in there that-
Yeah.
Oh, agreed.
Well, see, there was, it was previously in the building inspector's budget, but he didn't increase it, so ZBA put it in there.
And it should be in ZBA's budget.
That's fine, that's what she's doing for the help, yeah.
So, do we hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's tonight, the 17th.
All right, and the Veterans Services.
He changed, right?
This is revised, apparently.
Did you go back to Bolton, didn't you say that you were gonna get in touch with Bolton?
I emailed them and heard nothing. He actually gave some information in his-
I heard of.
Yeah, did you read that? If you are not aware, also the VSO for the town of Bolton with an arrangement in which Bolton pays more wages, and Berlin pays less in return for providing office space and office supplies. I just didn't know whether the salary that he gets here and the salary in Bolton were tied in any way. It doesn't sound like it from his information, but I did not hear back from the Bolton TA.
And you said it was pretty much a gentleman's agreement, there's nothing in writing anyone can find?
Right. So.
And again, he provides a valuable service, I've used it for my family, so.
Right.
And minimum wage is not exactly asking for a whole lot.
And it looks like the only increase is the salary.
Good.
So.
So, what changed from last? What changed?
He omitted the actual benefits by mistake, he was such a focus on his compensation that-
Oh, okay, motion to approve.
Seconded. All right, anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think he's just supporting documentation.
Is this a draft, Mary, is this a draft job description?
For who? If you felt that he needed one, if he's going to be classified-
Oh, did he actually put this in here?
He reviewed that, yep.
Okay.
And that was just his suggestion.
Okay, you wanna put, we could put that on-
Next.
A future agenda, yeah.
You wanna?
We could, I mean, we could put it on the second, we'll see.
How busy that gets.
Yeah. All right, yeah, just, maybe you could send this, can you send this to us? Thank you. All right, got some Selectmen budgets. Did you guys have a chance to look at these?
I did, I looked at it quick.
It was really-
That's our salaries. Mary.
Is there anything, is there anything in there about legal? Or what about-
Yeah, that's a different budget, but it wasn't there.
It's here.
All right.
It looks like the other services, Mary, is that the-
The $10,000 drop, you mean?
Yeah.
It was because last year the Selectmen had sought $20,000 to conduct a search for a treasurer, collector, and a town administrator. The FinCom cut that down to $10,000, which was approved at a town meeting, but none of it was spent.
Right.
At least not.
But it will be this year.
Do we still have monies for the Fire Chief search?
That's a separate, that's a special article.
Okay.
And so is the TA search, though.
True.
And that money was approved, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we have to do a tax collector's search-
You'd have to do a budget in 30.
This, yeah, which we would have to do anyways, because his only goes through till July 1st.
So do we put it back in?
Do we have anything else?
Do you wanna put $10,000 back in? For whatever?
I guess I'd rather have it in there if somebody leaves, somebody, rather than trying to figure out where it's gonna come from.
Agreed.
I watched the scrambling with your audits, the extra audit for the switch over and all of that, and I'd rather not have to do that, but.
I agree.
Yeah.
Can we, let's just leave it.
You can pen and ink change that, right there.
Right, just-
Put it back.
We'll put it back in.
I'd rather have it, not use it, than collect cans and try and find it.
So, I'm gonna say-
They're looking at reserve, last year they went from 20, a $20,000 request, down to 10, but I'm not telling you to put it at 20, I'm just saying, you may not get the full 10.
Oh, so to go well.
No, I'm not saying-
No, no, I, no, no, I understand that, you always ask for a little bit more, and usually end up where you wanna be.
The thought that we could do a TA search and a Fire Chief search-
For under 20, for $10,000.
That's a fantasy land I like to live in.
All right, so.
But it's not a reserve fund transfer either, 'cause you're anticipating these things, so, you know, is it realistic to ask for more, or, I don't know.
All right, I'm having trouble with the math here. I'll just leave the, I'll just leave-
Do you want me to, I can fix that sheet-
Yes.
-for you to sign.
Do you want my calculator?
One, zero.
I have my calculator in my nose.
These large screen version with $10,000?
Well, this is screwing me up, it says $79.99.
How my eyebrows, it's still?
Lower.
So.
Oh, because you had extra-
Yes, there were two. So, $26.01 plus 10 would be 12, 601, correct?
I wasn't actually doing the math.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna have Mary check it for me.
Show your work.
All right.
Show my work.
Show your work.
That's right.
Oh, boy, all right, so it looks like it would be a $12,000-
Increase.
Increase.
And again, we just, we need to make sure that that stays there. Yeah, that it's not wiped in half.
So, would it actually be? There.
And nothing else, I mean, everything else is pretty flat.
Just questioning these two numbers, but that's okay, Mary's good.
Mary'll do math.
Well, the computer does the math, I just print it. So you would change out the detail, and put the $10,000 back in, so it was 20, but what was actually approved at a town meeting was 10. Now, that used to be zero, I just put $10,000 in there, which brings that to 17, was it 9, I'm upside down.
17, 6, 9, 0.
And that's bringing it there, because the $10,000 is, that was actually what was appropriated at a town meeting, and then this is what you're now asking for another 10.
Well, we need to put this in here too.
No, the net difference is zero.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Same, so you, yeah, you just leave zero. So now, instead of that, that's your bottom line now.
$2,000 in line?
Holy crap, how did it go down?
No, no, it was $79.99 savings.
Oh, okay, oh, all right.
All right. Okay, so, there we go. Are we good with this? All right, are we good with this one?
Yeah.
Yes. Motion to approve? Okay, do I hear a second?
You do, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm just gonna leave all these in here, Mary, take the right one.
No.
All righty. I've seen all that, just making sure there's nothing stuck in here.
While you're looking, I talked about Recreation was one of the ones that was missing, which was confusing to me, 'cause normally they're really pretty good about that.
Yeah.
And she never actually got the email.
The email about the budget?
So who's missing?
So Rec, Town. Okay, she said she looked in her box, and there was never anything in her box, she looked in both her emails tonight.
Recreation never got a budget package?
All right.
I did them, so I know that they got them.
If it was there, it didn't get to her, and she's the chair, so.
Maybe someone picked them up and filed it somewhere, who knows?
Possible, and they're, they are all like, life and drama and all that too, but-
So they're gonna get it in by January?
They were getting it in by January, so.
All right, that sounds good.
Did you let them know it's all online?
She found the form, she was, yeah.
It's a building we did.
Yeah.
So you should have-
Oh, here we go, legal. Here's Historical. All right. Historical was level, no.
No, it went up.
Went up.
Six.
No, it was, it's level.
Is it level?
Mm-hmm, 'cause he brought it down, it went up for office supplies and backed down for other supplies.
So, can I ask you a really silly question? What's the difference between office supplies and other supplies?
They might use archival stuff to barcode stuff, let's say, which is different than office supplies, or shelving for the curatorial building, or, I'm not sure what supplies, but there could be something technically separate than a stapler and paper clips.
Right.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're on to legal.
I would agree, that needs to go up.
Yep.
Yep.
We, Mary put in for 70. I think that's probably pretty reasonable, it could be more than that, but. At least, and we were only budgeted for 40 last year, I thought it was 30. I thought they cut like, 20 from it, but I guess I was wrong.
Either way, it costs less to use the lawyer than it does to pay for the lawsuit.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And we just need to make sure that people requesting to go have a legit reason to go.
You know, I wonder, would it be worth the phone call to find out?
Yes.
Yeah, you know what I'm gonna say.
I know what you're saying, yes, to see whether they're-
Is another way of, another way of funding, not funding, but being built for this.
Something like a retainer, but not a retainer.
Yes, do you, would you like me to just make the phone call?
Yes.
Do you want to wait to approve this then? Till after I call? Or do you wanna approve it? And we could correct it, I suppose, if it's different.
Why don't you make the call?
Okay.
I mean, given there's a bunch coming back after Personnel Committee comes in, one more isn't gonna make or break us.
All right.
So it was 30 in fiscal year 18, the request in 19 was 50,000, but what was actually voted at a town meeting was 40.
40, okay. I'm probably thinking of the year before then. All right. Festive events.
Festivus for the rest of us?
Mm-hmm, and that's level funded at $2,100 at this point, and I believe the only thing we've used it for is the tree lighting.
Yep.
Do we leave it here?
What else would it be used for?
What has it been used for in the past?
Well, it was used for Home Day for a long time. And it was used for the Christmas time in Berlin.
It was originally supposed to be only for mailings.
Festive events was?
Mailings of Christmas time in Berlin's home mailer, and, I'm not sure how there was a mailer for Home Day, maybe there was a Home Day mailer.
I don't think it was, it was for Home Day until this past year, we didn't, I don't think, but it was originally the, it was supposed to be-
And it was for mailings for both, and there was one for Home Day, 'cause it had a little map on it, I think, and even with that, but.
Okay.
Either way, yeah.
So do we leave this? If it's just intended, we're intending it at this point, just for the tree, if something else comes up.
Call it the Christmas Tree Fund.
Yeah, we could change the name to the Christmas Tree Fund.
I mean, I gotta admit, the tree does look nice, I mean, I can see it coming down from Linden.
I can see you coming down from Linden.
I would just leave it as is.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary, I had several blowups that I was going to bring down and put around me, but I was afraid the hum of the air would drown out your recording, so.
Okay.
The next three are just not optional things, right? It's for the FinCom.
And they're estimates, and that's the best that we could get, so we do, you can budget based on the estimate, and if we have to tinker with it before, you know, down the road. But that's Maya's best estimates.
Okay, this the emails from Joanne?
Right.
Okay.
So I'm gonna motion to approve all three of those, because we have no choice but to approve those.
All right.
Agreed.
Second.
This gets, oh, this is stuck here. There we go.
So then who are we missing for budgets? Rec?
There is a list of-
Yeah, she sent us an email this afternoon.
I didn't see it, sorry.
I have it here.
So, there was a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd be surprised too, if Holly doesn't have something put together for budget, but we can check tomorrow when she's here.
Electricity, fuel oil?
Those are still-
There's a couple, and they have your name next to it, that's all. Sick pay, which she can't do that until she's got all the payroll budgets in.
All right, festive events, that's town. Sorry, my name's so long.
Is the streetlights gonna go down with these new lights, or do we just wanna level fund it?
It should go down, but we're not gonna know exactly what it is at this-
Until after.
Until, yeah, we go a year. It should go down a lot.
So we'll just level it this year?
That would be my suggestion, and then be happily surprised.
So which ones would you do? Workers' comp, unemployment, one of the three that you just signed that we approved.
And festive events.
Property and liability insurance.
Good.
Police and fires.
No, no, just the last three that you did, that we agreed on, all three.
Yep, workers' comp, $11.
All right, workers' comp.
And then, and workers' comp, and then it said police and fires, sickness and accident.
Got it, okay.
And property liability.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I didn't hear if Dave had discussed it all with you, the 1870 town hall, are we gonna continue to do electricity here? Or are they gonna start picking up their own electricity?
You know, I believe that he-
Electricity, you can do that. Well, no, I don't, I didn't do electricity, because I didn't know who was gonna pay for 1870.
I think it was crossed out on his public buildings.
Public buildings, buildings, or 1870 was gonna start taking on that expense back.
How did we split that? I'm having a moment here.
They paid the full, before.
Okay, so they paid the-
They used to pay their full electricity.
That stuff, and we paid the facilities type stuff, so the elevator maintenance and all of that.
He crossed out public buildings, electricity.
So-
That means you-
The library would be under the library.
I don't know, you wanna look, you wanna take a look first before?
1870, we weren't gonna change anything else of what we were doing before, but 1870, last year, we picked up here, versus they used to pay it. So I didn't know if they were gonna take it back for next year, or if we were gonna go another year to see what they raised. So that's why I hadn't given it yet, 'cause I didn't know what they were gonna do, and same with fuel oil. In the past, they paid $4,000 worth of their fuel oil, and then we picked up the balance. But I don't know, if you wanna just leave it leveled?
Did that came, come out of their revolving account? I don't think it's in any shape to do that right now.
So why don't I just level fund everything then, and we'll see where it goes, and you can always change it.
Yeah.
'Cause I know that Dave was gonna go talk to LeAnn, if it was today, or it was last week, they were gonna talk about it, so.
We can ask that question, we didn't approve that budget, so we can ask that question too.
All right, well, I'll just level it then.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I don't know what the guesstimates would be for the highway burn, cause they're all electric now.
Yeah, I know. Well, we did give you an estimate at one point, or give somebody an estimate.
Yeah, it was like eighteen thousand dollars or something.
Yep.
It was obscene. You see that, that number like burned in my brain? This is why I can't remember anything else, cause I have all these stupid things that stick.
Yep. And, uh, that's why I would love to get the solar done, but... Anyway, uh, moving on to the license renewals. We have Common Vic Shiller, Subway, Highland Commons, General Store, Cabellas. Yep.
Motion to approve the licenses.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here, sign.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, no one signed, sorry. Thanks. Here. Thanks. And I haven't signed any of them, ho, 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 just don't, so, you know, just saying. It's always a possibility, you never know, the night is late.
All righty, I think we've got them all. I believe we signed all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Community Compact, HR Best Practices Grant Update. I haven't heard from Tim.
All I, all I know is that, um, the last I heard, he was gonna have something for us shortly.
Yes, that's what I thought, so I put it on there.
Best I got.
Thinking, thinking it would be by tonight, but...
Can we give him a deadline? Do we have a deadline?
No, it's got to do with, um, communicating with another...
With Sean, yeah.
With Sean from, is that from, um, the Community Compact?
Yeah, I can't remember which.
So, he's probably waiting, awaiting information, and then was gonna get back to us.
But it was moving forward.
Yep.
He did write us an affirmative that it was moving in the direction it needed to move, and he'd be back with us.
Right. Next one is the ABCC, oh, oh, no, it isn't. It's the Board of Selectmen Response to RWJ, the Open Meeting Law Complaint. And this is, I assume, the draft, Mary?
Yep, cause it reviewed by Town Council.
Right.
Has or has what?
Has, but maybe.
Has, okay.
Okay.
Then motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you...
That needs to be signed, yes. Oh, is that still say draft?
It does still say draft.
Ew, okay. I will, um, I'll fix that for a second.
A minute, is there another one maybe? No.
Do you want me to attend that hearing, or does somebody else want that fun?
Oh, you know what? Um, he was gonna sign this, if you're approving it, it's for him to sign it on his letterhead, KP Law.
Great.
So you're approving it, I'll let him know that.
All right, thank you. Um, yes, Lisa, if they do need, um, someone to be there, it would be great if you could go.
Okay. I need the information list to... Where, I think, I don't remember.
Apparently it's at A, the ABCC Office.
One Ashbury Place.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a letter confirming our twelve ten eighteen, uh, vote to not renew the fire and EMS chief contract. This is the letter that we were going to send.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Interesting though, how he found out before he was called by you. News has legs.
Well, there were a lot of people in the room.
I know.
You'd kinda expect that.
I know, but you would almost expect a courtesy to let it, let the process flow out and let us contact him, but, I mean, it's neither nor here, I know.
That ended up being my fault, because I, I couldn't call him until that evening, the following evening, so.
No worries.
Yeah. I told him I felt bad about it, and he understood. Well, the... The next thing on the agenda was an eighteen seventy Town Hall Advisory Committee update, and my update is that I will attend the January eighth, their January eighth meeting to talk to them about the job description for, um, the Town Hall, eighteen seventy Town Hall Manager. I think the next thing is updates on FY twenty state legislative requests. Um, did you have any information for us, Lisa? You were gonna look into a couple of things?
I sent over the van.
Oh, that's right, I did see that.
And Joe had nothing, he had recommended that we put out an RFP for that, so he had no...
No information on, for example?
Dollar wise.
For the Bullard House?
Yeah.
Feasibility study, or their total renovation?
Feasibility study. I remember something in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty for the whole thing, but he also said you could start digging in there and it could go boom.
Surprise, yeah.
Um, I think that's kinda the gift that keeps on giving.
Do you, we don't know what the value of the home is, do we? I guess it's, well, I mean...
Yeah, I would have no idea where to even start.
I guess its value is more to us in Berlin than...
Correct, than a, than a true value.
Right.
It's piece of us.
An assessed value on it, but...
Well, I mean, I assume that needs to be, um, yeah, that's where it's gonna go, if it's insured, then there's gotta be a dollar on it somewhere.
There's also paying the balance of the Hearst house to get it back into town.
I've got one thing at a time.
Do we?
Smaller dollar amount. I think the dollar...
Doesn't that need to be rebuilt?
Reassembled, yeah.
We would need to get it back from Western Massachusetts.
If it's, yeah.
It's out of town.
Yeah, but if it's even, do we, I'm just questioning, you know, do we want it to come back? I mean, what, what's the steps?
I don't even wanna go there at this point, let somebody else.
I think there, you need, you'll have to ask the history of that, I don't know.
Yeah, um, I'll get you in contact with the town.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Solar Burn Canopies?
Yes. Um, how are we gonna get a number for that?
For what?
For the can, for the solar. Were we gonna ask Energy?
Amy may have numbers for that. We could ask.
Okay.
Amy Badet.
You're Amy?
No, Amy, Amy Badet.
Badet.
Um, so what you found for the van?
Yep.
We have a number for that.
Yep.
Um, the Bullard House renovations, I'm not quite sure where to go with that.
You could put the eighty-five in that, um...
Right. At the minimum, we could put in the eighty-five. Or even, even a hundred thousand. Cause I have a feeling they're gonna find things once they get started on that project.
Yep.
Um, do you wanna do that, put it in for a hundred? At least at this point?
Hundred for?
The Bullard House. Is that a great?
Value is replacement cost, two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Replacement cost?
Yeah.
Really? Okay. Well? What do you ladies think? Stick with the eighty, or go with the hundred?
Hundred. Go high, and then you know that it'll come down, so.
Was there a van number?
There, there was a van number. Um, did you get that email? Mary?
I thought I copied you in on that.
They had a price on it, I just scanned whatever.
It did, yeah.
It was, it was in the...
Not the one that you sent me, I got a quote that I sent over today. Um, that was from Michigan Mobility Solutions. He was kind of not, he was quick, but he was kind of a jerk on the phone.
Maybe corrupted, or of an unknown file for that.
Um, it came up in Excel.
Right, it did. Did you, uh, did we put together an RFP for the fire EMS?
As I dropped to the floor. Um, yeah, we did. Mary made it pretty, took out all references to an older, to another town, put in town of Berlin, flipped out.
Okay.
Dates and stuff, so I think it's just there for us to go through, the only comment that I had on it was that there were just a couple minor pagination issues for formatting, not a big deal. Uh, I mean, the content was pretty spot on.
We already done the RFP, okay.
Well, I think...
Is sixty-five-two the amount for the council and Higgin van?
I think it was sixty-five something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So you want that in there, okay.
Yeah. And then, and we said a hundred thousand for the Bullard House.
Mm-hmm.
And Lisa, do you wanna check with Amy?
I just sent her an email that I copied you on.
Okay. Good. And then when you get that number, do you wanna just send it to Mary? So she can...
Well, do you, do you want then going over to the legislative?
Yeah.
Perhaps you do? Okay. No prioritization among those three?
I would say if we had to, I would vote for the van.
First.
Yeah.
I would say, and then the solar, I think, but...
Solar next.
Yep, to reduce expenses that that barn's gonna cost.
Okay.
Right.
And then the house.
Yep. Okay. So, do we need to take a vote to approve the RFP? And then you can finalize it?
Do you want those dates, do those dates all work?
I mean, they were, they were what, a week away from Lisa's, correct?
Yeah, roughly. The only thing is, I would just, maybe just tinker with that a little bit, because we're gonna have sealed envelopes coming in for two executive search firms at the same time. I just had one come in today, and I'm like, oh, which one is this? Oh, it couldn't be the police fire chief yet.
So we got one?
Yeah, one, but I'm just saying, like, I think that...
But we got one, Lisa's gonna cartwheel.
They should be clearly labeled so that we're opening them on the right dates, cause we're not gonna know which one is which, so I just might mess with that a little bit, just to make it clear as to what, they have to label it properly.
Okay.
But other than that, you good with that?
Yeah, I am. All right.
Do we, need a motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve the RFP after Mary tinkers with the dates.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Town Office Front Door, um, David asked us to put this on the agenda.
Space.
For the space issues?
Well, that's what committee, I don't know what the building committee there is.
That, that's what he was talking about.
So the space use committee.
Yep, forward it to them.
Forward it to them.
Um, I think, may, maybe you wanna ask them to get a price together, that...
Mm-hmm.
If this would be something, or, or guess, I guess have someone, an expert of some kind, look into it.
Correct. And see what needs to be done.
See what would need to be done, and if there's a price tag attached.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um...
And then about the ICE too?
And, and the same with the ICE too. Um, okay. Other new business.
The grant contract? Did you skip thirteen?
Oh, there's a thirteen on this one.
Oh, I have thirteen on this one.
Oh.
I must be looking at the wrong one.
FY nineteen COA Formula Grant Contract, eight thousand five four four.
It's just a formula grant.
Okay. So is this in, looking for an approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And here it is, I believe, is this it?
Yes, three, three originals.
Three signatures?
Okay, it just looked very similar to the other one I just signed.
They're all the standard Massachusetts.
I guess so. Yeah. All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the formula grant to, so that it can be submitted?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, boy. Uh, other new business. Um, because we had our meeting on December fourteenth, on a Friday, after we'd pretty much put the agenda together, um, I didn't put anything on here to do with the department head meeting, and so, I guess if, I'm looking for, if you have a specific item, or if you wanna just go over the items that we talked about in the meeting, and we can talk about them in January.
Yeah, the only one that seemed to have some true passion behind it is the whole liaison and what we can do with it, so if we can just...
Look at that, oh.
That was just my feedback, I didn't email it, cause I didn't wanna break open meeting law, so I will send it over to you for...
Okay. Well, so what I was gonna say was, depending on January seconds.
You had your own copy.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I was reading so often.
I'm sorry.
You can.
I'm leaning, leaning.
To read it convenient.
Um, was that, uh, you know, we could have some discussion. Hopefully there'll be time on the second, we'll see, with all the budgets that are coming in. Um, otherwise, it would be the next Monday.
Well, and that brings me to my second point about the budgets, I mean, obviously, there's a ton that are still missing. So, I would like to make a suggestion or a motion that if these aren't in by the thirty-first, when they're due, and we're not looking at them on the second, that you're flat. You're flat, there's no more, there's no more waiting around, and ah, another week, another week, we gotta stop it. And I think it stops here. And I think it stops here, just like it'll carry over into the meeting in May.
It didn't seem like there was a ton of stuff that really, I know it looks like a ton of stuff, but you know, Dennis is gonna take out a lot of those. June was gonna take out a lot of those, just didn't have the information yet. Rec is okay.
It may not be that bad.
Holly's gonna have COA. Wheat, I think it is from external.
I can bring that up on Wednesday, I'm pointing to the...
Cultural Council is a grant, isn't it?
Cultural Council.
Don't they get a grant, or do we fund that as a grant? How does that...
They have both. They have a grant and they have a budget now.
They, they do have a budget. It's usually level.
Do you have Treasury Collector on there, too?
Yeah, we have Treasury Collector, personnel, tax titles, electricity, oil, town report...
But this is not a bad list.
No, it's not bad.
I know it looks like a bad list, but it's not a bad list at all.
Compared to what you've had in the past?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
I mean, the only one would be, maybe recreation, uh, and then Dennis, and then you have a couple.
So this is not, don't, yeah, don't panic about this at all.
Doesn't look that bad.
Mr. Bradley?
Is there one on the other table?
There isn't one on there for cable.
You were approved.
Did we approve cable?
Yeah, we approved you like the first week.
You don't actually, no.
No, that was Memorial Day.
That was Memorial Day.
Yeah.
It's just a special article. It's just to renew the...
To move the money.
So you don't have to submit a budget.
But you're, you're supposed to submit a budget for the selectmen, so that you guys know.
'Cause we're meeting Thursday.
Yeah, you should.
Okay.
Did we get a budget?
I don't know the answer to that, I would assume you, well, you probably didn't, because you don't give them a budget like this. You would do a budget based on what?
Thanks.
The grant. What do you wanna call it?
We did.
Yeah. You need to add it to your list, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we still submit it.
By the end of the month.
By the 31st.
Because you need to add request money for the special article.
So can we go with that, though?
Oh, my God.
If they're late, they're flat.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that. We just need to send them out a warning, again.
See, and I have an issue with that, because...
How many warnings are we gonna send?
Yeah, you're a, you know what, you're a grown-up, you're a volunteer.
Well, I mean, just to say that you will be level funded if your budget isn't in by the end of December. That should be communicated.
But that's it. I'm okay with one. It goes out, your budget's due by the 31st. If it's not in the selectmen's hands on the 2nd, you're flat. Hugs and kisses, the selectmen. I mean, we gotta start saying no. We gotta stop giving the leeway.
Can I vote that?
I already got an answer from Amy. I need a starting point for the size needed. We had discussed having the town build the structure. If I know how much space they have, I can design a system around that. Since the building is new, I can't really base this design on how much energy they need. I'll talk to the Energy Committee tomorrow and get some ideas about size. So there you go.
All right. So I'm gonna make a motion that if we don't have budgets in hand on the 2nd, anything that's late is flat. Reminder, one reminder to go out.
Well, one reminder saying that it will be flat.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Second?
Second.
Vote? We gotta push this along here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not worried about those, although they're gonna come in, though.
So...
Not even concerned about those.
You're not, you're voting to it?
That's fine, send it out. I just, I'm not worried that those folks are gonna get their budgets in.
All right.
Those are not the ones that we struggle with.
Not as late as I thought, tonight.
No. So, um, old business, new business, anything, any updates?
I just had a couple of agenda requests for the 2nd. I'd like to approve whoever we get for the screening committee on 2nd, and I would also like to discuss and talk about interview scheduling for any RFPs that we receive on the 2nd.
Interview RFP?
We'll, we'll need to interview the screening committees, so I'd like to start...
Put it on the agenda?
Put it on the agenda.
But we won't be interviewing them that night?
We won't be interviewing them, then, but we need to talk about it, then, in order to get these interviews in in January.
Okay.
So, those need to go on the agenda.
Now, was there a deadline or anything advertised for, like, wanting to be on the committees, or no?
No, but it said we needed them from January through July, so I would think that you would assume that I need you in January.
Okay. Do we know how many, besides the ones that you talked about? Do we have any others?
Not yet.
Okay.
Nope. So if you got thoughts, then now's the time.
Well, unless we wanna like...
Only one is applied at this point. Superintendent has the only one who's applied.
Yes, he put in his. Do we need to have them each fill out one of those, or can we...
That's what you had told Lisa last week.
You had requested, so I did send something out to Scott and Chief Galvin to say fill out the form.
Okay.
They just haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah.
Let's make it fair and consistent. This way, no one can say, you're stacking, you're playing favorites. Boom, done.
But I, I still have to reiterate that on this particular committee, there are slots we need to fill, and there's only one superintendent, and there's only one police chief, and that, so there are...
So those were suggested, or were those...
The, the town management study particularly wanted somebody...
Right.
From there, and like I said, when, when I was in the, the thing with all the other towns, the superintendent was one that everybody had on if they could get them.
Okay.
And there are a lot of really good reasons for that. One being, he's actually been through this process with the screening committee, and my guess is nobody else on that committee that we get is going to have been through the process.
You mean a town administrator screening committee?
No.
Or just a screening committee?
Gone, gone through a screening committee. I mean, the process is very similar. But he will have been on the other end of that and know how that's, that should go.
Yeah.
Are you differentiating positions on this? Cause it doesn't say that the...
Well, actually, to start, maybe not until...
The end of it?
You have to be careful, because some of those folks may not want their current employers to know.
Right.
So, there is some leeway in that area until you get to the finalist, I believe, and then the finalists have to come out.
There's no number of...
So this is what you have already sent?
Well, that's all that you voted, so there's no number of seats?
Right.
And there's no differentiated seats?
Right.
Like, you must have the school superintendent, you must have the police chief?
There isn't.
No, but that's okay. We don't have to have it on this.
My, my thought was five, like I said, five to seven. If we get enough for seven, then it's perfectly allowable to have seven. I don't think we're going to at this point, we'll probably end up with five, but, you know?
Right.
Five to seven is the range that we want.
Okay. So Lisa, what were the two? To talk about the screening committee, and then what was the other one?
Um, it was to talk about the screening committee, then also to just have a discussion on the RFPs that come in, and talk about scheduling the interviews for those folks we want to have in, to interview, so that they can have their interviews in January and be hired by February, I think, 19th, we wanted to hire them by.
Okay. So Mary, you'll post the fire chief one?
Yes.
Same spots you posted, the DA one? Thank you.
All righty. Was there, was there something else?
Nope.
You good?
That's what I got.
How about you?
I got nothing.
Really?
You better, yeah, you better hurry up and like, you better hurry up and close the meeting, because I will come up with something, just say... No, no, no! I got, I didn't get a turn!
She'll think of something!
No, I won't let her. She doesn't get to speak yet.
Wow! Bad Santa! Putting my eyebrows back on for that one.
So, we had an email from the Finance Director from the schools. Are we okay? He was asking us if we're okay with an extension to getting their budget in.
Yes.
Were we supposed to respond to that? I thought we were.
Finance, Finance already did, and said they were fine, so...
I know, but I thought we were supposed to respond to it. It was addressed to Selectmen, Finance Committee, CPC, whatever. So I just, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to run it by you guys. It looked like there was information from Personnel on the Treasury Collector appointment. Did you happen to read that?
I saw it, I didn't write it.
I don't wanna have a 10-day internal thing.
You don't?
No, not if we have to have that consistently across the board.
I, that was my question, do we have to? Can, sometimes you can post internally and at the same time externally, and you got, you're covered. I, I was a little confused by that. That's why I was asked, wanted to bring it up, to see if anybody else...
But the thing is, we have to post it, right?
Yes, it sounds like we have to post it.
That was the end of the day, we need to post it, so then I suppose we oughta get on doing that sooner rather than later.
Yep. Okay.
What is our, our process going to be for that one?
We create the script, and Personnel has to approve a job posting before it can go out.
The script, uh...
What, the advertisement?
Description, no?
Well, perhaps the description, too, but the advertisement itself has to be approved by Personnel before it can be put out.
Cause we don't have a combination tax collector, treasurer, job description.
True. Or pay rate, right? I think Claire did some comps on that, but I'm not sure she shared it with you all?
And I believe, as we voted to approve that Personnel spreadsheet, I think we were also approving their recommendation, which I believe was right around $67,000 or something.
So, sorry, so Dennis can already put his budget in, 'cause he already knows his pack?
Well, I guess.
I think Dennis is woefully low, is he not, though?
I think that's what they did some comps, and that's what they came up with on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, 'cause he stood up last year and put the, what was taken out back in.
Right.
I, I would ask, 'cause I think... I think he may be low from just a, if we were gonna hire somebody else, I think that you need, we may need to go higher, but I think that needs to be looked at. I think they may, they may have based what's on your spreadsheet on Dennis, and I think we need to look at...
You know what, I think they also sent an email with comps.
Okay. I don't, I don't remember seeing it, but either way, we need to clarify.